Say the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Kristi, can we roll call, please?
Bierstedt.
Here.
Bjork.
Here.
Carroll.
Here.
Downey.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Next, we have approval from the approval of the minutes from the October 11th regular and workshop minutes.
I saw move.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, next we'll go on to approval of the bills with Mr. Bierstedt.
Mayor and council, I move to approve payment of bills in the amount of $1,611,049.60 subject to the controller's review.
Second.
Questions or comments on the bills? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we'll move on to public comments. If there's anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to say, come on up. And if you do come up, make sure you state your name and your address for us and then write it down on these paper, too. Okay, we'll move on.
Dan, I'd like to say something. I don't know how many of people got to see the utility advisory board meeting of last week, but I want to commend them for a job well done on Monday night. They did an excellent job and things are going to be tabled. Um, what the big discussion was there, but um, I just want to compliment them for a job well done. So, um, good job, utility advisory board.
Mr. Ray, may I make an announcement? Um, in-person absentee voting is started today and is available through um, uh, Friday of next week. So um, if you're too busy to go to the polls on November 8th or would rather just get it over with, um, stop by City Hall during business hours and um, uh, be sure to vote.
Okay, I'll close the council hearing and open up the public hearing on a resolution authorizing special assessment police powers under section 66.0703 Wisconsin statutes for the benefit of the River Falls Business Improvement District. The first thing we'll do before I ask the audience is Jolene Larson from the bid board will give us a little presentation on this first.
Hi, I'm Jolene Larson. Um, I'm the president, I live at 502 East Elm Street in River Falls. I'm currently the president of the bid board and I'm here as per usual. Um, I've been here a lot every year um, to tell you what we've done and how this works. Um, I see some new faces, so I'll kind of give you a brief history and then I'll outline what we've done for the year and then what we intend to do. We are of funded by an assessment and in 1989, we, uh, the city of River Falls, uh, decided to become a Wisconsin, um, Main Street community, which was a new program. In 1990, uh, we actually started our funding and it's funded through an assessment. Our borders are Division Street, uh, down to Cascade, Second Street, and then we follow the river behind, um, Long Falls Street and, and take in, uh, some of the businesses along the river there. Um, so it is a, a special tax increment finance district. We are 33 years old, which was kind of a shock when I did the math because I was just 15 when we started. We, um, were first organized and it was quite contentious when we first organized because first of all, it's an assessment, which isn't a tax and nobody likes a tax. Um, there was redundancy in the programming with the River Falls Chamber. We have a really strong chamber in River Falls and so we found ourselves kind of tripping over each other. And so that was a concern. And then the major concern were our constituents was that we used our money to really embrace the bid district and not to just augment city funds for capital improvements. Um, so in 2000, it became pretty evident, we were called Main Street 2000. And so that, the program was to go 10 years. And we had at that time a full-time director and all our monies, majority of our monies was going for staff. And we were also funded by the city of River Falls and the two counties EDCs. But they only committed for the first 10 years. At, in 2000, we lost that commitment. Um, and so we were down to our financing of $42,000 and some change is what we pretty much bring in from the tax assessment. And it was quite evident that at, even at that time, that we weren't going to get a full-time director and get anything done for $42,000. So we decided to reinvent ourselves and become a grant program. And that's what we've done and we've done that for 20 years. Since we started doing that in, in 2000, we have spent over a million dollars just in the downtown district alone. We, we just served that core district and for the last 20 years, 90% of our monies has gone back into that district. Um, 5% of those monies goes to the city for, um, helping us because we don't have a director. So there is some paperwork and meeting minutes and public noticing and all those things that we have, rules that we have to follow. So we need some direction there. And then, so pretty much 95% of the money goes back into the district and that's a pretty good, um, record for tax collection, I would say. Um, dealing with COVID has really changed the way business has been done uh, in the last several years. And um, then combining that with supply chain issues, uh, inflation, uh, the lack of finding people to work in your businesses has really made, uh, it a challenge to be in business. I think for the most part, when we talk to our constituents, most of them are doing pretty well and have been able to manage through this and are, are being very successful. I manage a business downtown and we're having a banner year and had banner years since, uh, since COVID. But we've really had to change the way we do business. And so the bid has had to change as well. This year, we have done, um, some really great projects with people, including we did a new branding for the Radisson. So the hotel became a Radisson. So we helped them with their signage. Uh, we did a couple of small grant funds with Old Man Golf. He, he started a business downtown. So we were able to help him with his sign. We did a new facade and paint for the building that houses Mimi's. If you haven't been down Elm Street, uh, there was that kind of gray-green building. Um, it's really, it's gray now and it looks really very, very nice. We're doing a new facade for the Freeman Building across the street. James Freeman, um, daughter owns those buildings now, Amy. Uh, she is joining the bid board starting next month. James was one of our first major supporters and did, redid the old Ruby McLaughlin Building. So her buildings have really had a lot of attention and they really look and have stayed true to the Main Street historical look, which is kind of what our goal is with this project. We've also done, uh, the building that Vince is doing at Edward G. Jones on Second Street. If you noticed that it was owned by the attorneys, um, he's doing some major remodeling there and that's looking wonderful. We helped the Tarnation Tavern with their front of their building. Hub 70 has a new front on their building and Juniors has some updated signage. Along with that, we also do the gardens on Second Street. Um, with help of many, many volunteers in the city, we also do the hanging baskets, um, on the Main Street, the pedestrian bridge and the two bridges going across Kinney-Kinney. Uh, along with that, uh, we, we, we work hand in hand with, we're probably the financing tool, if you will, with the River Falls Chamber and they're celebrating the 25th anniversary of the River Dazzle this year. And I remember that when we were six of us with goofy hats and some libations, walking down Main Street with lights on. So it's come a long way since then. It brings thousands, actually thousands of people to River Falls for that and the chili crawl. We are really lucky to have great cooperation with the city staff. They water our plants for us. Uh, they help us with mulch, getting the mulch there. Uh, they're, they tend many of our meetings. They kind of point us in the right direction and it's really been a great working relationship. We also recently added two more Main Street benches. So, uh, those are ordered and I think they're here and they will be going on on Main Street as well as the smoking, um, receptacles for the cigarette butts. We keep, we do have that program as well. Uh, we also have funded with the city art project and I can't remember the name. Last night when I was writing this, I was like, what is the name of that group? But it's the group that put together the mural underneath the bridge. So we also do murals. We have a mural by the, the subway. We have the murals on the building on the corner. We are, uh, looking for other places to do murals, but we also have funded that mural down, helped fund that mural down there and continue to fund art throughout the community. So our real goal is to continue to help, um, augment the businesses in River Falls. Help River Falls stay, the downtown to keep its historical look and nature. Um, but yet keep the businesses looking good and give them a little bit of reprieve from the sign, sign costs, the facade costs and help them with a little bit of that cost. So we thank you for your support. We are asking again for your support. Uh, in the 33 years that we've been here, we've never asked for, uh, more money to be assessed to the businesses. We think it's a fair assessment. Uh, and we did not ask for an increase again this year. So with that, if you have any questions, I will entertain them. Otherwise, thank you.
Okay. First, I'll see if the audience, is there anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to say about this? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and reopen the council hearing and I'll take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the resolution authorizing special assessment police powers under section 66.0703 Wisconsin statutes for the benefit of the River Falls Business Improvement District.
Second. Okay, questions or comments for me? Okay, thanks, Jolene. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we'll close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on ordinance 2022-13. Uh, this is an ordinance creating section 9.24.060, disorderly conduct related to election workers. And this is the second reading. Is there anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to say about this? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and reopen up the council hearing and I'll take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the ordinance related to disorderly conduct towards election workers.
Second. Okay, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we'll move on, we'll move on and close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on ordinance 2022-14. This is an ordinance creating section 9.24.070, residential picketing regulations. This is the second reading. There again, is there anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to say about this? Okay, we'll, we'll close the public hearing and reopen up the council hearing and I will take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We adopt ordinance 2022-14.
Second. Questions or comments?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I have a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, go ahead.
I'll go after.
It disappoints me that this action has become necessary. While we have not had any issues that would make these two ordinances necessary, I hope we never will. The mere fact that we need to put them in place speaks to where we are as a society. We have come to a place where we cannot have civil discussions and walk away at least trying to understand an opposing position a person or group might have without fear of retribution. I have not counted the number of fellow council members I've served with. What I can tell you is that while I have disagreed with almost all at one time or another of my fellow council members, at no time did I feel that those I disagreed with had anything other than the best interest of those we represent. I hope that I, I hope that those I have disagreed with share the same point of view of my position in our interactions. The number of those willing to serve in, in public service is dwindling. I have found my service to the residents of River Falls both rewarding and challenging. I hope that those considering getting involved at any level in our society will not use these ordinances as an excuse not to step forward. It is important that citizens serve at all levels of our community. I hope that those listening to my comments will make, will make you think about how we all interact with each other. Please be respectful and listen to understand a different point of view, not just listen to respond. This is a personal skill that I try to work on in my personal, professional and public life every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Um, I agree with Councilman, Councilman Morissette about the divided discourse in this country. I, what I have concerns about with this resolution is that we are creating a solution in search of a problem. We haven't had this happen here. I don't foresee this happening here and what I, while I don't really want people picketing outside my house, I believe that they have a First Amendment right to do so as long as they are on public property. And I don't want to dissuade people from expressing their, um, views, um, out of an inconvenience for me. And so I'm going to be opposing this resolution, but I do believe that we have procedures in place to protect elected officials if someone were to leave the public property or do harassing things or, and, and of that nature. We already have those in place. I just really worry that we, um, are limiting our citizens' ability to tell us that they don't like what we're doing. And, um, as much as I don't like it, I feel like that's kind of what I signed up for when, um, I became a councilperson. So, um, that's, but I do agree with you on the discourse piece. I think we should be able to disagree.
Anybody else have anything?
I'm just going to say I'm going to be opposed as, um, older person, Mueller as well, so, um, and really with the same points, so.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just had a question. So in terms of the, how this actually works out, um, I was chatting with, uh, reading this and just thinking about it in my head. So if someone is, you know, Carol takes all your lunch money, so you're mad at me. You're outside my, let's say my driveway and you're on the concrete that the city owns. Do we view that as, as picketing or is it only when it steps into actually trespassing? Just for a technical understanding of how this is laid out.
I don't know who you're throwing that at, but I'm going to try to throw it right back over to the city attorney so he.
That's fine.
Yeah, this ordinance would apply to public property as well. The intent is that even if you're on public property, if you are specifically targeting a residence in a residential area, you would be prohibited from picketing in front of that residence, even if you're on public property.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I guess I'll just finish up my comment and say, so like a lot of times in these meetings, I, I agree with everyone. So I, I think, uh, both council members that spoke, all three had really good points of view here. I reluctantly would tend to, to agree that it is protected speech to be able to protest me. Hopefully you do it in a respectful and lawful way. And if you did it in a non-lawful way, I believe we have statutes already that can handle it, i.e. trespassing. So I guess I will not be in support of this.
Question for Mr. Simpson. Could you help define, and I know this has been passed in a couple other places, but could you help define the difference between constitutional rights versus public in the discussion we're having?
I'm not sure I can. Um, let me try to understand the question. So are you asking the ordinance that's been put forward has some limited testing on constitutionality? So at, at least, we believe at least one place in Wisconsin has given us an indication that this would be tested as constitutional, even though certainly we're aware of free speech. And that's the hesitation by staff when we're drafting this too, is what's the test of how, you know, you want to restrict people's rights. But in this case, you're not, you're not eliminating people's First Amendment rights. You're just directing them in certain locations where it's most, where, where the council would be feeling it's most appropriate or inappropriate. And certainly that's going to be up for challenge too, potentially if people want to challenge it. So I don't know if I answered your question though, is that?
To an extent.
And, and Assistant City Administrator Stroud, um, it can talk about context too, if that's important for, for the council. But I think it sounds like you understand the, the, the test and the balance here that, and I do want to remind the council that this isn't to protect the council. So although you would be in, included in this, this, the, the examples in Wisconsin have been judges, police officers, um, some city council mayors, others, but it's, I think the, we've seen primarily it's been judges and police officers that have had the, the targeted residential picketing. And yes, there's some things that would be unlawful, even if it wasn't, we didn't have this ordinance. But this ordinance makes it clear, you know, you can't intentionally stand on the public and prevent people from accessing their home and other things, which yes, there's laws that will allow us to try to write citations and, and deal with this. This, this makes it more clear to the public that in River Falls, if you want to picket a public official, there's the Plaza at City Hall, there's, there's all kinds of areas you can do that, the library, um, downtown streets. It's just not in residential neighborhoods and the, and the weight here is that it, it, the impact is on not just the official that's being picketed. It's on the entire neighborhood and that people have a reasonable expectation that when they're in a residential neighborhood, that just because, um, Mr. Carroll chose to run for council, the rest of his neighbors didn't choose to be involved in people's expression of, of that protest.
Follow-up question. Has there been any lawsuits regarding this? Because it seems like there's some guinea pigs lined up here just waiting to have their city sued.
Yeah, this particular ordinance almost exactly to it has been held to be constitutional because of the compelling governmental interest in protecting privacy in the home.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, I want to give a little bit of context for this. Um, as probably most of you know, the First Amendment, um, of the US Constitution gives us the right of free speech. Um, free speech is also the right to not speak when you want to. Um, uh, and it has been constitutional to have reasonable restrictions on the time, place and manner of that speech. You know, the, the big example is always you can't like run into the, the false theater and you'll fire. Um, that would be putting people in danger. Um, uh, so it's, uh, and, uh, I agree with, um, uh, what's been said here. Um, and as someone who has disagreed with, uh, Mr. Morissette from time to time, I would agree that, you know, I, I feel the same way. But we do live in times that are particularly contentious and especially with, um, uh, the things we read about doxing people online, publishing their addresses and, you know, encouraging people to show up at their home, at their homes. Um, yeah, not only is the person, uh, affected, but also their family members, the, the people around them. So this is not just, um, uh, for, uh, to prevent people from, uh, telling us what they think. Uh, because they do have other areas for that. Um, uh, in front of City Hall, they can write to us, they can, uh, call us, they can write letters to the paper. There's lots of ways that they can have that speech. Uh, and so I'm, I'm going to be supportive of this because I don't think that we should wait until, um, something maybe unfortunate happens. Uh, because then, then we'll be reactive rather than proactive. So, anyway, thank you.
Anybody else have anything?
I just had something else to say.
No, I don't.
Okay, we've got a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
You want, can you get that? Do you want to try a roll call?
Oh, I'll have the clerk do a, conduct a roll call and you should vote the same way that you just voted audibly.
Bjork.
No.
Odine.
Yes.
Carroll.
No.
Miller.
No.
Morissette.
Yes.
Downey.
No.
Bierstedt.
Yes.
Four to three.
Okay, we'll close the council hearing and open up a public hearing, um, on ordinance 2022-15. This is an ordinance creating chapter 13.26 of the Minnesota Code of the City River Falls for the municipal streetlight cost recovery system. This is the first reading. Is there anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to say? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and open up the council hearing and I'll take them, or no, I won't take a motion. Does anybody have any questions on this? Okay, we will close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on ordinance 2022-16. This is an ordinance creating chapter 12.23 of the Minnesota Code of the City River Falls, motor vehicle registration fee. This is the first reading. Is there anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to say about this? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and open up the council hearing. And does the council have any questions about this? Okay, one more. We'll close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on ordinance number 2022-17. This is an ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of City River Falls, Wisconsin for the year of 2023. And this is the first reading. And first, we're going to have Josh Solinger, our finance director, give us a little presentation. And then we'll hand it over if there's anybody in the audience.
So, good evening, uh, mayor and council members. I will move through this quickly. We've had two workshops at this point, so I think everybody, um, has had an opportunity to be, um, well-informed about what the budget entails. So just as a reminder, the total 2023, 2024 biennial budget totals $96,910,201. Some of the notable increases compared to the last biennial budget are shown below and include things such as an additional FTE within the general fund, the additions of our ARPA special revenue fund, since we'll now be implementing that spending plan you, um, approved earlier this year, the streetlight fund and funds for TIDS 17 and 18, which are new TIDS, would not have been in the last biennial budget. So the proposed net levy increase is 2.59% for 2023 compared to 2022. Um, the gross levy increases we discussed at the workshop, you're just simply taking what is our proposed levy for 23 compared to 22, calculating that percent increase. But when you factor in growth in the community, the non-growth portion of, of the levy increases by 2.59%. So there are some fee changes proposed in this budget. First is the vehicle registration fee that you just had a first reading of. There is a street lighting special charge or street lighting fee that you also just had a first reading of. And then our solid waste fund, we are proposing an increase to $19 in garbage and recycling fees for residential customers. This is an overview of our 2023 capital improvement plan, which, um, by approving the budget ordinance for fiscal year 23, this becomes incorporated into that budget. So we have the first year portion of Man Valley Development, Powell Avenue Bridge, um, redecking, first year portion of BioSolids facility, patrol vehicle replacements and, um, tractor backhoe replacements. So financing for these above projects aren't general fund financing. They do come from a combination of utility cash, um, the ARPA spending plan that you approved earlier this year, and then planned borrowing as we discussed at the workshops as well. So the ordinance before you for this first reading and then the second reading at the next council meeting, again, the two-year budget plan is $96,910,201. But what you're really doing in the ordinance is appropriating fiscal year 2023, which totals $47,022,331, the general fund portion of which is $12,812,824. As a reminder, and it's, it's spelled out in the ordinance, you are approving by functional area within the general fund. So things like public safety, conservation and development, pretty high-level categories. Um, that's what you're approving in terms of the general fund budget. And then all the other funds you're appropriating and approving at the bottom line of each individual fund. You're then granting authority to staff to implement the budget for fiscal year 2023. And the levy for tax year 2022 that we'll be collecting in 2023 totals $7,511,253. As I mentioned, gross increase of 5.27% from 2022, a net increase of 2.59%. And then you're also in the ordinance authorizing, uh, levy on taxable properties in the city. So that is it for my presentation. And I will sit in the front in case you have any questions.
I do have a question real quick, Josh.
For the audience, please.
Oh, okay.
Hang on one second.
Yep.
Thanks, Josh.
Thanks, Jeff. Uh, is there anybody in the audience has anything like to say? Any comments? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and reopen the council hearing. I'll take a, oh no, I won't take a motion.
Josh, I just have a quick question on the waste. We were talking about moving it up to $19 for residents. What are we talking about for commercial? I asked that at the, um, workshop we had too, but I still don't know what our answer is there.
We only, we only charge for residential properties. So commercial, commercial properties contract with their own garbage. There's a, there's one category that's kind of sits between commercial and residential. I think it's three and, three or four units that can opt in. I think it's two units and less is, is in, that is under the contract. And then there's a few properties that can opt in or out. And then larger properties, apartment buildings, commercial downtown buildings, they all get their own garbage. We don't provide it.
Okay, fair enough. Good. Thank you.
I've got a question.
Yep.
Um, Mr. Simpson, uh, from my understanding, the city has anticipated to receive 150,000 state funding over a two-year budget period. Just for compliance with the state's expenditure restraint program, the ERP. When it says anticipated, is that a guaranteed thing? Or what's your experience?
Uh, no, there's no guarantees with the state of Wisconsin, but, um, I think it's likely.
It's likely.
Given the current, the way the law is currently set up and then the budget that we've recommended to you that will qualify for expenditure restraint.
And have we gotten any, have we gotten that in the past?
We have.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, move on to the consent agenda. First thing on the agenda is going to be the following minutes. We got the Historic Preservation Commission from 9/21 and 9/14. We got the, uh, River Falls Housing Authority from 9/14. We got the Utility Advisory Board from.
Microphone on, Mayor.
That's what that's for. I, I never seen that flash before. Sorry. Anyways, uh, River Falls Housing Authority from 9/14, Utility Advisory Board from 9/19, West San Antonio, Wisconsin Bio Solids Facility Commission from 9/15, Park and Rec Advisory Board from 9/21, the Plan Commission from 9/6, and the Library Board from 9/12. Next one is a resolution approving the general, general development plan for 190 unit multifamily development on Paulson Road. Uh, next one is a resolution approving the general development plan for 117 units, single and two-family development on South Apollo Road and West Maple Street. And the last one is a resolution award in 2023 through 2025 tree terming contract. Does anybody want to pull anything?
Mr. Mayor would like to pull number nine. Mr. Mayor would like to pull number 10.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda items eight, A through G, um, and 11.
First and second, any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, Mr. Don, you pulled number nine.
Resolution approving the general development plan for 190 unit multifamily development on Paulson Road at Radio Road. Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, in my understanding, this has a gate in its plan, which goes directly against our city's comprehensive plan, which calls for an inclusive community. It wouldn't take much to remove, uh, that gate. And we would have a, a pretty healthy plan, I believe. Um, I'm looking for, I'll be voting against this unless there's a friendly motion to remove it, to keep to our comprehensive plan on being the inclusive community.
But just so you remember, this is just the general development plan. If we like the concept of the plan, that, the gate stuff, we can talk about when it comes later on. Yeah, more specific in the, in the S I P plan or the, not the S I, S I P, right? If, if, if you, but that, that, just so you remember that, this is just generally, yep, we like the 190 acres, we like, or 190 units, the way it's laid out, we like that. The gate part of it, we can worry about, you know, we can take that off easily later, if you want, if you remember that or not.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
I'll just, as much as we like to tell the council, you can do what you'd like. And be thoughtful about the conditions in which you put on granting approval for the GDP. So it, it is accurate that we, in our comprehensive plan, um, emphasize inclusivity. You have to make, you should be thoughtful about making a connection to an ordinance or something, a requirement of ours if you're going to condition approval. So that's, that's something you need to do in your own mind, uh, council members, if, if you think you've got a, um, if you're not being arbitrary or capricious in your, um, your approvals, but, um, that's just something you should think about. And you can, from a practical standpoint, you can raise the objection now or at the S I P. Uh, I would, I would suggest that, uh, the main concern would be just making sure that you feel you're on solid ground to make an objection to the general development plan. Given the fact that staff is not aware of specific prohibition or any language that would, um, eliminate restricting access to, to, uh, a development. It's private streets and, egress, ingress, there's no, from public safety perspective, they met our concerns about public safety access. So, so respectfully, this is a decision for the council to make. The, the developers here also can speak to your questions, or you certainly can always ask the developer to voluntarily make a change to their plan. And I'm not suggesting the council needs to do that. Or that the council as a group is in favor of that, um, because you should be acting as a group, not, not individuals, but just a, a word of caution there that, you don't have to approve the recommended, recommended action ever. But if you're not going to approve the GDP, then be thoughtful about your objections. And I understand, and you've read in the record, you're the reason for your objection.
To continue on number nine.
Yes.
I'm, I'm going to be voting against number nine. I don't think that's, um, the vision that we have, um, entering our city. And, um, um, that's where I stand. I just, I'm going to be voting against number nine.
Anybody else have anything? Yep.
Um, yeah, I just, um, uh, uh, having taken a look at this, um, uh, I will be voting for it. And to, um, although I agree with you about the gate, but, um, uh, two things about this. I initially thought that there was going to be fence around it. That's not true. It's not a fence. And the gate is not, um, a gate into like private streets or anything. It's essentially, um, entrance into their parking lots. So, um, uh, and, uh, that the police, um, have no problem with access to it, um, was also, uh, important to me. So thank you.
I stated when we brought the property into the city, that I was concerned that we were very deliberate with those four corners of the intersection of, of 35 and, and, uh, radio in this Paulson area. This is a nice project. We need housing. Um, I'd love to see it somewhere else in the city, but I stated at the time that, that, uh, we, we decided the land use designation on this and when we brought it in, that I was opposed to residential projects. So I'm going to also be voting no on it.
Okay, anybody else have anything?
Mr. Mayor, I have, uh, one thing on this too. So there, there are some thoughtful questions here and, and, and good opinions and ideas, uh, coming from everyone here. I'm for it because I think it's pretty clear. We do need more housing. I, we've been, um, looking at our study and that has been, uh, you know, done both of the city and with the housing authority, uh, from years ago, and we keep updating that and looking at that. And we just have to continue to press forward and bring more housing in the town. Um, I hear the objections from people, but I think it's important that, that you hear from council members, we are in favor of this because we do have to find a way to continue to grow our community, to stay inclusive, to stay competitive. And so I will be in favor of this.
Mr. Mayor, I have a concern I'm going to talk about very briefly. And it's, you know, when it comes to the comp plan, we want our neighbors who will see each other and their communities' needs first. Not put up gates or walls that'll potentially ostracize each other. So for me, I'm not against this plan when it comes to the housing element, but I am against the gate. And that's why I'm going to be voting no. I think it leads down a dark path.
Okay, anybody else have anything?
Take out the gate and I'll vote for it.
First and second?
Mr. Mayor, is there interest on the part of the council hearing from the developer?
Yeah, we'd love to hear from the developer. Come on up.
Hi, I'm, uh, Mark Labrie with Saturday Properties. After we're done here, I'm 3546 Dakota Avenue South in St. Louis Park. Uh, appreciate y'all having us back and taking the time to discuss, discuss this project. So again, appreciate you all wanting housing to be a priority in, in this community. I mean, also the biggest thing that we're looking at for, for this sort of housing is, is looking at the missing middle. You know, I grew up a community not dissimilar to River Falls, a group outside of Milwaukee, um, you know, in a, what was a middle-class community. The same home, you know, I grew up like in a pulte-built cliche subdivision house, you know, that was 200,000 bucks in the mid 90s. A new build house is now 400 for the same. So if you go and do that math and show that is, I mean, a household has to make 185,000 dollars to go and afford one of these new homes. You know, that's something where we go and look, and that's, I'm attracted to communities that, you know, I feel like connect with, I mean, having that middle class feel. And I think that's what's really important about this, you know, and this is a community that wants to attract the sort of families here. I mean, that's where, you know, when y'all moved to town, it's like, who are our neighbors who live in our community? Understanding, you know, comments about the gate, that's, that's something that we can absolutely take a look at. That's, you know, the next step in the process, we understand is specifically as part of the SIP is to go and look at those exact things. You know, and that's, and we're happy to go and take a look at it again as, you know, internally with our design team, um, we'll speak with staff more about it. And the intention is not to go and, and create this exclusivity. It is one where, you know, folks are, you know, same, same, same notion, they want to have that sense of security. It's not meant to keep people, it's meant to frankly, and this is a real technical term, uh, it's supposed to keep the honest thieves out, you know, when you go and have, it's not, it's not a fennec gated community all the way around. Think of just at night when you have, hey, there's a car driving down the street slowly. This prevents that going on. This is again, the gate's opening during the day is when our, when our staff isn't there to go and make, make that be the case. So again, we can go and, and we can talk about it later time. We can address it further here. Um, but again, appreciate y'all hearing us out.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. I got, I, I think we had a first and a second already.
No, we don't.
Don't? Oh no, we don't. That was all questions. So yes, I'll take a motion on this one. On number nine.
I believe I can make a motion to approve the resolution approving the general development plan for 190 unit multifamily development on Paulson Road.
Second. First and the second, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
I did.
Yeah.
Bjork, Morissette and Donning against.
Okay.
Passes.
So it passes?
Yes.
Okay. And then number 10, Mr. Carroll, you pulled number 10.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just for the same reason. So I just want to, once again, thank the city. Um, I know these things sometimes can feel a bit contentious, but it really is important that we keep growing, um, just by listening to city staff and reading and researching. Cities that grow continue to thrive. Cities that do not grow do not thrive. And with the way, uh, with how hard it is to get, uh, single family homes off the ground and, and supply chain and everything else, it's important that we still have, uh, other ways to bring in residents and, and continue onward. So just want to be, uh, thankful for the, for this project and supportive of it. Yeah, I will go ahead then to, um, move to approve the resolution approving the general development plan for the 117 unit single two-family development on South Apollo Road and West Maple Street.
Second. First, second, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let's move on to, uh, reports. This will, uh, Comptroller's report, I'm sorry, Diane.
Uh, the Comptroller's report for September 2022. General fund revenues through the end of September were 8 million 811,957 dollars or 75% of total budgeted revenues for the year. Revenues in September included 30,222 dollars in building permits and 12,630 dollars in miscellaneous revenue. Year-to-date expenditures through the end of September were 8 million 624,533 dollars or 74% of total budgeted expenditures for a year. As of September 30th, 2022, net revenues over expenditures were 187,424 dollars.
Thanks. Okay, next we're going to recess into closed session per Wisconsin State Statutes 19.851E for the following purposes. Deliberating or negotiating the purchases of public property, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. To wit, this is Paulson Road Properties, St. Craig County Parcel 276 dash 1093 dash 60 dash 100.
Mr. Mayor, before you take a motion on that, can I just make a couple of quick announcements?
Sure.
Sorry, um, odd even parking on city streets resumes November 1st and runs nightly through March 31st. It's enforced from 1:00 to 6:00 a.m. So vehicles must be parked on the odd numbered side of the street on odd dates and the even numbered side on even dates, unless other no parking regulations are in effect during that time. Vehicles in violation may be ticketed and/or towed for snow removal, street maintenance, or other public safety needs. This ordinance is enforced regardless of weather conditions. Please feel free to contact the police department with any questions regarding this ordinance. Uh, their non-emergency number is 715-425-0909. Just a couple of dates to remind the council, um, November 1st, Tuesday. Correct? Tuesday, November 1st, 5:00 p.m. is your joint workshop with the Plan Commission on the Comprehensive Plan Process. So get an update on that. That's scheduled from 5:00 to 6:15. Then, then November 9th, the council will meet, that's a Wednesday. Elections will be utilized in city council chambers. So we've moved your date, um, by ordinance, you moved your date, um, to November 9th to accommodate, um, elections. So 6:30 on Wednesday night instead of Tuesday. Sorry for the interruption.
Oh, you're fine. Thank you. Uh, so I'll take a motion on closed session.
So moved.
Second.
First and second, uh, Kristi, clear roll call please.
Miller?
Yes.
Bjork?
Yes.
Biersted?
Yes.
Morissette?
Upstain.
Tony?
Yes.
Odine?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Okay, we're in closed session. I'll be leaving. I'll go back though to close. Can't wait for Mr. Biersted. Yeah, that's really making a big comeback, isn't it?